Past election. Congratulations to Governor Kathy Hochul for being the first woman elected to lead the state of New York, and I look forward to continuing to work with her and Lieutenant Governor Antonio Delgado to advance our city and our state. I also want to congratulate, of course, New York's own Senator Chuck Schumer for retaining his position as Senate Majority Leader. Chuck's outstanding leadership will continue to benefit not just our city but the entire nation. Lastly, I want to thank Speaker Nancy Pelosi for her decades of leadership in the House of Representatives. Speaker Pelosi shattered glass ceilings and demonstrated what women's leadership can achieve for our country. We're grateful for her many years of dedicated public service as a legislative leader, and we're better for it. Today, I want to thank, I want to start by discussing the important work and achievement of this council to advance affordable housing as our city confronts a dire housing crisis. We have too few homes for New Yorkers, and that is felt, and that is felt the most for those who need affordable housing at the deepest levels. The affordable housing units we need the most are the least available. New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey placed the vacancy rate for the lowest-income apartments at less than 1%. The lack of housing supply overall is only increased, is only increasing the housing costs and pressures on New Yorkers. We need hundreds of thousands more apartments with a focus on affordable units. The lack of affordable permanent housing is the underlying driver of our city's current level of homelessness, which rivals the Great Depression with over 60,000 New Yorkers left unhoused. We know this is likely an undercount, and that this crisis disproportionately harms Black and Latino New Yorkers. There are many solutions that we need to pursue to address this issue, including resolving the bureaucratic barriers that block people from transitioning from homelessness and the shelter system to permanent housing, increasing the supply of supportive housing and speeding placements into it, protecting tenants and homeowners alike to maintain their housing stability, and there are many more. Included in the many solutions must be the development of more affordable housing, especially at levels of deep affordability. That also requires several approaches. Included among them are greater investment of capital funding for affordable housing and adequate staffing of our housing agencies by the administration. The council has an important role to play in helping to advance the development of affordable housing, and we've been contributing our part to advance these efforts by approving major housing development projects in our land use process. Yesterday, the council's land use committee voted to approve four land use applications in Brooklyn and Queens that will collectively produce nearly 6,000 units of housing, 65% of which will be affordable. Over 2,000 of the housing units, 30%, would be deeply affordable for extremely or very low-income households. These approved projects are the types of major steps we need to take to address this housing crisis. Today, we will vote on the two largest projects, Innovation Queens and Innovative Urban Village. They're different in character, not only because of their distinct locations, but the details of financing, land values, and development teams. Yet, they share a common feature. They push aggressive affordable housing development forward by demanding more of the administration and private developers and working with this council to advance affordable housing at deep levels. With Innovation Queens, we knew this was a critical project that had the opportunity to create many units of affordable housing. It was not something the city council could fail to try negotiating, which is why, as Speaker, I marshaled my office to bring the parties together, support demands of the local community as expressed by the council member, and push the administration to meet those community demands in a hard negotiation. This council prioritized the greatest housing needs of the city and community by prioritizing a deepening of affordability. With the land use and policy experts on our staff, we put forward an innovative approach to use CityFEP's vouchers to increase affordability and address the challenges New Yorkers have faced in utilizing them to secure permanent housing. We push for the administration to work towards this and the developer to set aside market-rate units for New Yorkers with these rental housing vouchers. These are major, not for not only this project and the local community, but from a citywide policy perspective. As Speaker, I have prioritized advancing the council's leadership to address the housing crisis. I have conveyed publicly and in conversations within the body that this council must play a constructive role in advancing affordable housing development to meet the scale of this crisis with solutions. We must push forward negotiations on land use applications to meet the needs of our communities and our city, and that also requires good faith efforts by those with whom we must negotiate. Yesterday was a prime example of what that looks like, and only adds to the overall contributions this body has made towards these desperately needed efforts in our city throughout this year. Members understand the scale of this crisis because our constituents are facing it. We hear about their housing challenges in our communities day in and day out. This council is on the cusp of approving over 40 land use applications since January 2022, creating over 12,000 total housing units with over 63% of them designated as affordable, to provide nearly 8,000 affordable apartments for New Yorkers. This is the type of bold action that our city needs to address this crisis, and I'm proud that we're stepping up to meet the moment. We must continue to lead, and I'm confident that this body will play a major part in the effort to address New Yorkers' housing needs. I will have more to say on housing issues facing New York City in the coming weeks, but today I'm proud of this body and the work our members and staff have done to understand the gravity of our challenge and are willing to confront it. I thank the council members who represent the districts where the land use applications we're approving today are located, as well as the members who have similarly advanced such projects throughout this year to develop more affordable housing. There are also partners in government who have played important roles in working with us, and I want to thank them as well. And finally, I want to make sure to thank the staff of our Council Land Use Division who provide members with the expertise and guidance to make this work happen. Paris Strader, Chelsea Kelly, Brian Paul, Arthur Huh, Angelina Martinez Rubio, James Cottone, Ryan Koté, Tim Anderson, Julia Erman, Andrew Lassiter, Kaitlin Greer, Sandy Nicholas, Maria Salbavaro, and Bridgette James. Thank you all so much for your tireless efforts and expertise in helping this council advance projects that deliver housing for thousands of New Yorkers and meet the needs of communities by supporting our ability to negotiate for our constituents. Now let's move on to our stated agenda. We will be voting on the following finance items. Introduction 798, sponsored by council members Justin Brannan, Phara Lewis, Kristen Richardson-Jordan, and Diana Ayala by request of the mayor, will authorize an increase in the amount to be expended annually in the 125th Street and Dumbo Business Improvement Districts. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by council member Justin Brannan authorizes an Article 11 tax exemption for 12 buildings with a total of 251 residential units in South Williamsburg. And lastly, a transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. We will be voting on the following land use items. The SCA site selection of a 252-seat early childhood education center in Councilmember Hanks District. 78-18 164th Street rezoning, an application that will bring an existing non-conforming medical laboratory into conformance with zoning. The council will modify the boundary of the proposed C2-3 overlay by limiting it to the 164th Street frontage in Councilmember Gennaro's District. Innovative Urban Village will facilitate development of 11 new mixed-use buildings with 1,975 affordable residential units, ground-floor commercial area, a performing arts center, residential and public parking, and open space surrounding the existing Christian Cultural Center house of worship in Councilmember Barron's District. Innovation Queens, applications to facilitate development of a large-scale mixed-use development with over 3,100 housing units in 13 buildings, ranging in height from 8 to 27 stories, and over 2 acres of publicly accessible open space in Councilmember Wan's District in Astoria, Queens. As negotiated by the council, the project will be comprised of approximately 45% affordable units, as the applicant and administration have agreed to incorporate the development of HPD-financed affordable housing buildings, and CityFEP's vouchers in addition to the requirements of MIH Option 1. The updated project includes significant changes that deliver major housing and community benefits for residents of the area. It doubles the initial commitment of affordable units from 711 units to 1,436 affordable units. It increases deeply affordable housing at an unprecedented scale in the neighborhood, providing 825 deeply affordable apartments for extremely or very low-income households, dedicates affordable housing units for the formerly unhoused, and sets aside units that were previously market-rate for extremely low-income people with CityFEP's rental vouchers. And finally, it secures community benefits that include a $2 million commitment towards legal services to protect neighboring tenants from housing displacement, discrimination, and harassment. This project was a major priority for me and this city to get done in the right way, and I'm proud for how it advanced. Finally, we will vote on the following pieces of legislation. First, Introduction 525-B sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer would require that any second-hand dealer purchasing a used catalytic converter must first obtain information from the seller about the vehicle the catalytic converter was removed from, which demonstrates that the seller either owns the vehicle or was authorized to remove the catalytic converter in connection with a repair. In addition, the purchaser would be required to determine if the catalytic converter presented is consistent with the identified vehicle. The purchaser would be required to hold records of this information for at least six years and make them available to law enforcement in real time. I now invite Councilmember Brewer to come forward and say a few words about her legislation.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I just want to say that this bill is particularly needed because according to the NYPD or others, theft of catalytic converters are up 221%. I also heard 269%. 733 thefts citywide year-to-date. Just to give you some examples, Manhattan is up 199%, but Staten Island is up 670% in terms of the thefts. Removing a converter takes less than two minutes. I've never done it, but that's my understanding. Thieves resell the precious metals found inside the device to chop shops or on the market, the black market so-called. Replacing the part can run a crime victim from 2,000 to 3,000. That's why they do it. And one got stolen last night. I am very familiar with the cause. I don't even own a damn car, but I hear about this. This is not just an economic problem for individuals who have to call their insurance company, then they have to find an auto repair shop, then they have to get the converter replaced. Also, whenever a nonprofit organization, we heard from the nonprofits as much as we heard from individuals, loses access to their vehicles due to catalytic converter theft, older adults who rely on the services or people who need food, they suffer because that van is out of service. I've heard from many nonprofit organizations whose delivery trucks, and I have no idea why they are targets, but they are, have been sidelined due to this theft. The bill will make it harder for thieves to resell stolen catalytic converters. It requires sellers, as you heard of these converters, to provide a vehicle ID number and a copy of the certificate of title. Sellers and buyers who fail to comply will be subject to fines. And in addition to penalties, any violation will be grounds for the suspension of a license of that particular business. The requirements will work to destabilize the activities of chop shops and this market. Of late, multiple local police precincts are also ramping up their awareness efforts, and they've had some flyers, and they've been telling people about this problem. I just want to add that in October, Governor Hochul signed legislation which amends the vehicle and traffic law to add catalytic converters as a major component vehicle part, which will require vehicle dismantlers to maintain records, just like we're talking about for our bill. Failing to maintain those records upon request is a Class A misdemeanor, and it will include penalties. The state law will also require car dealers to stock catalytic converter etching kits to put on a unique serial number on the component so they can be stolen. So I want to thank the Speaker and my colleagues, and I want to say that, you know, there are lots of things that the city council does, but sometimes just helping small changes really makes us the people's house. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Brewer, and as one who has watched this go on within my own senior center, being a victim of this theft for vans, thank you so much for this important legislation. It's common sense stuff. Next, Introduction 610A sponsored by Councilmember Eric Botcher would require the Department of Education to distribute information to students annually regarding suicide prevention, including information about the new National 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline Number, suicide warning signs, and risk factors, and other suicide prevention resources. I now invite Councilmember Botcher to speak about his legislation.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. Today, we are passing my second bill, and this one is for the kids. Somewhere in New York City right now, as we stand here, there is a young person who has lost the will to live, and they're making concrete plans to take their own life. That's happening right now somewhere in New York, and now is a, this is a critical moment to reach this young person before it's too late. That's a position that I myself was in when I was 15 years old, but I was not reached, and I went through with it. My mom inexplicably that night decided to come into my bedroom and check on me, and if she hadn't, I wouldn't be here today. But they didn't have, back then, the resources that we have now. They didn't have the 988 hotline. They didn't have a lot of literature and information about suicide prevention. We have that now. So we have to make sure that that information is getting out into the schools, into the hands of young people, and that's what this legislation would do. It would require the Department of Education to distribute information about the 988 hotline and other suicide information resources to young people. And with this legislation, we will not only help save the lives of young people, but will also help spare countless others, friends and loved ones, from lifetimes of pain and heartache. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Botcher. Lastly, Introduction 609A sponsored by Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to establish a year-long pilot program to offer financial incentives for the return of used needles, syringes, and sharps at locations in the five council districts with the highest need. The program would only be open to individuals who use needles, syringes, or sharps for non-medical reasons. I now invite Deputy Speaker Ayala to come forward and deliver remarks on her bill.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, members of the press. Today, the city council will be voting Intro 609 sponsored by myself and Councilmember Russell. This bill calls for the creation of a pilot syringe buyback program that incentivizes the return of used syringes in exchange for 20 cents per needle and no more than $10 a day. It is not lost on me that people will probably wonder why it makes sense to give active drug users the needles for free and then pay them to return them. My response to that is come and join me for a walk around my district playgrounds and jointly-operated spaces where children, Black and Brown children, play. Spaces that should be safe child havens turned into dangerous spaces due to an overwhelming number of syringe litter. It is our responsibility to ensure that those children are able to enjoy themselves in the innocent way children do without having to come in contact with exposed dirty needles. This is not only unacceptable, but it is the very definition of a public health crisis. This is not the quality of life that we want to give our children. The irony is that we all know that this is happening, yet very little is being done to address this head-on, and to date, no plan of action has been presented. It is because of the council's pushback that we have seen increased funding for harm reduction groups to help pick up needles in communities facing this challenge. We have also funded a special unit with DASNY to help assist with cleanup efforts. Unfortunately, even with these additional resources in place, we cannot keep up with the demand, making this pilot program necessary. And let me be clear, the city is in the midst of a serious opioid crisis, and this bill is not intended to remediate that. It is simply responding to one of the ways in which the epidemic renders us vulnerable and exposes the general public to a number of communicable diseases. I will be introducing a sister bill to this Intro 609 that calls on the city to create a community-based response to this crisis in those communities hardest hit that will look at the issue more holistically. But in the interim, let's get these syringes out of the reach of children. Thank you.
And Introduction 404A sponsored by our Mental Health Disabilities and Addiction Committee Chair, Councilmember Lynda Lee, would require DOHMH or another agency designated by the mayor to report on funds allocated to the city through the opioid settlement sharing agreement with the state or any other agreement with an opioid supply chain participant. The report must be made within 30 days of the release of each city financial plan or update, and would disclose the total amount of opioid funds where the funds are being sent, the number of New Yorkers benefiting from the funds, and anticipated appropriation of the funds broken down by fiscal year. I now invite Councilmember Lynda Lee to her first pre-stated press conference and to come to the podium and speak about her bill.
Yes, exciting. First one, for my bill, actually, I should say. So thank you so much. Good afternoon, Madam Speaker and colleagues. As Chair of the Committee on Mental Health Disabilities and Addictions, I am so proud that today the council will be passing Intro 404, which will require DOHMH to regularly report on city spending of funds from Attorney General Letitia James, historic settlements with opioid manufacturers and distributors. Reporting will include a running total of the funds, where and how they're being spent, and a timeline of when this crucial funding for our city will be depleted. Firstly, I want to thank the Attorney General for her tenacity in holding the manufacturers and distributors of these drugs accountable, the opioid epidemic devastated New Yorkers and their families. New York State has had a disproportionate share of the nationwide spike in overdose-related deaths, with one New Yorker dying every three hours. So again, I just want to say, one New Yorker dying every three hours. While no amount of money can bring back those we lost, we can make sure that every penny secured goes towards treatment and resources for our communities. Our city deserves clarity and transparency on how settlement funds will be spent so that we can understand the reasons for drug misuse, prevention, addiction, and future deaths, and create measures that incorporate preventive care and resources. Early this year at an oversight hearing, we mapped out our vision with Dr. Ashwin Vasan, Commissioner of DOHMH, so that we could tailor and refine this legislation. I want to thank the administration for being so collaborative, and we all want to meet the needs of New Yorkers during this epidemic. As a social worker who just recently left the nonprofit sector and started the first outpatient mental health clinic serving an immigrant community, I've witnessed the suffering firsthand, and it's only worsened since the onset of COVID. Our city deserves to know how we will combat this ongoing crisis, and this legislation serves as the blueprint and give New Yorkers insight into the city's efforts to build infrastructure and programming that will lead us through the opioid epidemic. I want to thank my staff, the council committee staff, as well as the dedicated efforts of my colleagues on the Committee on Mental Health Disabilities and Addictions, and the leadership of Speaker Adrian Adams for helping me bring this legislation to the floor. Thank you.
That concludes our stated agenda, and with that, we'll take on-topic questions first. Yeah.
Hi, Emily.
Right. Great question. You know, when I talk to the members about the need that we cannot be the council of no when it comes to building housing and affordable housing, we want to make sure that we're district-centric. Not every district is the same, and the needs for all districts are certainly very, very different. So that's the way that we're framing our work going forward as far as our projects are concerned in building, which we know that we have to do. We're so behind. We're taking a look at things district by district and then planning accordingly, according to the needs of the community, the advisement of the local council member, of course, and then figuring everything else out with our land use division, who have been outstanding during these processes.
May I ask initially about the role of the private sector in development? It's hard to do any of these projects without the New York City Football Club or the Christian Cultural Center. We're so pristine.
Sure, sure. We really do pride ourselves in being able to work with good partners, partners that share the same concern with the rest of us, who are dedicated to building affordable housing for New Yorkers. So with that comes honing relationships, making sure that things are understood on both sides of the table as far as the need, again, of the specific districts and communities, and making sure that our partners, be it private or not, but our partners have to understand where we're coming from as a council, the very, very, the very, very critical need of the city at this particular time, and the role that we all have to play when it comes to making sure that we are building housing for New Yorkers. Thank you, Emily.
Hi. I have a question to speak to Innovation Queens, and it's about the Business Relocation Fund. I'm wondering who's going to oversee that, and if you have a dollar figure.
I don't have a dollar figure for that. We're still working with the local council member, the community, to figure that part out.
Interesting follow-up. I know that the two council members, Councilmember Barron and Councilmember Wan are not here for this. Was it scheduling thing?
I didn't schedule them, so I can't even answer that. Sorry.
Yeah. So I was wondering if some of the council could address how we're in the hierarchy of demand on constituent services. Is housing, is this something that the council also feel for? We hear the words. What is it? Isn't this something that presents itself every day in constituent services? Do you have semantic dots that could humanize it for a second?
I'm going to go to my sage of the council to answer that. I have my own examples, but I'm sure Councilmember Brewer has some things to share when it comes to...
Yes, obviously as borough president and certainly a city council, housing is number one, and it's all kinds. Housing is, I don't have an apartment, I'm a senior who came back from the hospital, I live in a five-story walk-up, I cannot, I need an elevator. It's obviously NYCHA. It's, I have, you know, a family, we're doubled up, I need new. Housing is number one. And of course, my recollection is we need 564,000 units in the city of New York. That's the number I always hear. So yes, housing in a constituent, I'm sure we all feel the same way, is a number-one request on all levels. Also, I don't want to get evicted. Here are my papers. Where's my lawyer?
You know, and even, you know, going through our districts, those of us who do experience walking through and seeing people that are unhoused throughout our own districts, I've had to personally speak with people sitting in a bus shelter saying, "I need help." We give them as much help as we possibly can through our office, so we see it on a daily basis. It is at the top of the list. Thank you.
Yeah. So you mentioned earlier that you were sort of proud of how this project, Innovation Queens, but there are also those who are sort of criticized this process and who say it's back and forth, we're so fraught, you don't know whether something's going to happen or not happen. It's kind of like, it was not really conducive to developing housing in New York City, and it also, you know, warms the city's priorities a little bit. I'm wondering if you feel like, if you look back at this, is this really how things should work, and it's all predicated on the benefits, or how would you change how this process worked?
You know, all negotiations have different characteristics. Certainly Innovation Queens had its own characteristics. I have always encouraged my members to be very careful with their negotiations, but we also have a team that work, you know, with the council members. We want to do what is best for the communities, especially during this crisis, and I can't stress it enough. The crisis has to take priority. We have to do what's right for New York and New Yorkers who have no place to live, and we have to do that very carefully, with a careful eye on the finances, on the funding, on the affordability. If we can get deeper, we're going to negotiate to do just that, and I think that we did a heck of a job with Innovation Queens.
And just as well, have you convinced council members we won't even get to this point, or won't even, you know, will stop competition in the form of the...
You know, I push for my members to take ownership and to lead when it comes to their communities, specifically around the issue of, you know, of growing housing in their communities. So we try to bring people together around the negotiation. We're going to continue to do that. We're going to continue to work with each council member that is faced with situations of development and growing their communities to the best of our ability.
Any more on-topic questions? Okay, moving on topic. Anything?
So a question about this budget letter that the mayor's budget director put out yesterday.
We're going to continue to work with each council member that is faced with situations of development and growing their communities to the best of our ability.
Any more on-topic questions? Anything?
So a question about this budget letter that the mayor's budget director put out yesterday, and talking about cutting headcounts for vacant positions, and then also, you know, your funding throughout the mayor's office, or maybe, yeah, no funding for your programs, you know, what are your impressions on that?
You know, it's really perplexing why a vacancy reduction would be announced just a week after the November financial plan was released. We're scrutinizing it right now, but the city can't afford to lose staff in those agencies that really are relied upon to address the multiple crises we're facing. We just can't. So whether it's developing housing, addressing mental health, or any of the challenges we need to confront, we can't afford this. So we're scrutinizing it right now.
In that letter from the OMB, the city said it's exploring some various, like, hiring and retention strategies. What do you think the city can or should do to hire and retain more public employees?
You know, that's a great question. We are obviously significantly low when it comes to the jobs right now, the folks that have not come back, you know, from the pandemic. I think that, you know, as a city overall, we probably don't do, and this is true in a lot of different spaces, we don't do our best when it comes to tooting our own horn about the work, the work that's available, the work that can be produced, the different agencies and the work that the agencies do, and the long, the big picture of the agencies and the immense help, the tremendous help that these agencies provide to our everyday citizen. So we got, we have to get better at being our own best cheerleaders, and I think that's going to go a long way.
And can the council, with the November budget plan, can you make changes? Are you going to try and push the mayor on this, or is it more of a thumbs up, thumbs down?
Well, again, this is something that we've got to discuss among the body. We've got to carefully consider everything that we're looking at. We do have the ability to make some changes, but again, we want to come together, talk about it some more, and really take a look at what this all looks like.
Thanks, Madam Speaker. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but another budget question.
Bad? Can you think of a different?
What do you suggest?
Not dead horse.
Not a dead horse.
I don't want to beat, I'll just...
Rephrase, rephrase.
Too soon. So specifically, a portuguese letter that the budget director released yesterday, it laid out a number of exemptions for uniformed agencies in particular. I asked the mayor about this earlier today. He said that he's largely exempting PD from these cuts in order to keep the city safe. I'm just wondering what you make of that argument, and if you think it makes sense to exempt PD while basically proposing to cut out all other agencies.
Well, I can't really, you know, speculate on what the mayor's reasons were for exemptions. I'm of the opinion that, you know, all agencies are created equal. So in my estimation, all agencies should be laid out, taken a look at, and, you know, acted on accordingly.
So there was a court ruling today that upheld a state Supreme Court decision regarding a charge for retirees who don't opt-in to Medicare Advantage. Can you comment on that decision, what the council's next steps are? Are you, what's the status of, are you going to change the administrative code, and you get a decision on that?
Great question. We are still discussing the issue internally, and we're receiving briefings. Of course, this decision is still brand-new, so we are moving deliberately and thoughtfully because we want to protect healthcare for our current municipal employees and retirees. So I understand that there was just a court decision issued, but we're still reviewing it, and I haven't even been briefed on it yet.
And just as a follow-up in that vein...
Sure.
You know municipal employees, you're related to them, you're familiar with them. In essence, what happened was, in another period of time, it seems a million years ago, 2014, the MLC agreed to a certain kind of construct which helped fund the city moving forward and putting raises. But that was precipitated, and resumed concessions and savings down the line. A pandemic happened since.
Correct.
So I'm not wondering if under that almost force to measure, isn't it time for like a blue ribbon panel? Because to try to hold public workers who didn't even get hazard pay to something they agreed to get a raise before the pandemic, it just seems unfair. Is there any thought of a blue ribbon panel or something like that to get all the stakeholders? And then we ask you less questions.
You know, thank you, Bob. Well, the questions are all good, they're all relevant, but, you know, again, you know, full transparency, this is brand-new, this is something that the council is still discussing and scrutinizing, so there really is no way for me to address a blue ribbon panel or any other, you know, thought around this, yet we still have so much to consider right now when it comes to the whole thing.
Is a part of it, though, also the budget news, and I'm not wondering, and I'm hearing the scarcity, you're really dealing with heavy issues. Is it possible that the federal government stepped away from an MGA to our major metropolitan cities? Because I cover national issues, and this same conversation is happening in major population centers around the country, with the president fighting now to try to get renewed COVID aid?
I would not disagree with you. I think that our federal partners really do have to take a good, long look at some of the ways that we are actually losing in our cities, particularly our large cities, of course, that have larger populations to care for and consider, so I do not disagree with you there. Thank you.
We never disagree with Bob.
Never disagree with Bob. Thank you all.